All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you Deputy Mayor for your chairmanship. And now we have motions. Counselor Marula, you wish to introduce your motion respecting the Hamilton Police Service Board governance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's moved by myself and it's seconded by Counselor Collins. Whereas, under the Police Services Act, the City of Hamilton is mandated to provide for adequate and effective police services. And whereas, the standards for police operations and police behaviour are established by the province and there are legislative protections ensuring oversight by the province and recourse to the Ontario Police Services Commission. And whereas, the police services budget constitutes a significant component of the city's annual operating budget for which the public holds Hamilton City Council accountable. And whereas, following the model used for public health and emergency services, fire and ambulance, Hamilton City Council believes that the governance of the Police Services Hamilton should align to more accurately reflect this accountability. And whereas, under the current statutory regime, the Hamilton Police Service is governed by a seven-member police services board comprised three members of council, one council-appointed citizen, and three provincially-appointed citizens. And whereas, council believes that a change in the governance of the police services is fair, appropriate, accountable, and transparent. And whereas, council accepts and supports the key principles for police service governance, namely accountability and independence, and particularly accountability financially and operationally to the citizens served, and independence in the carrying out of law enforcement. And whereas, council supports a model where the Hamilton Police Service is governed directly by council, as is the case with a number of cities in Canada, such as Quebec City in Quebec, Fredericton, New Brunswick, and Charlottetown, Prince Edward Island. And whereas, council could alternatively support a model where the Police Services Board is comprised exclusively of members of council, like the Hamilton Board of Health, or alternatively, some combination of councillors and citizens appointed by city council, as is the case with several cities in Canada, such as with the Edmonton, Alberta Police Commission. Nine commissioners, all appointed by city council, a combination of councillors and citizens; the Regina Saskatchewan Board of Police Commissioners, five commissioners, all appointed by city council, a combination of councillors and citizens; and the St. Jean, New Brunswick Board of Police Commissioners, seven commissioners, six appointed by council, and a combination of councillors and citizens, and one by the provincial citizen. And whereas, governance directly by council or by a police service board comprised of members of council and/or citizens appointed by council must, according to law, abide by and not interfere with the principle of independence for the police service in terms of law enforcement. And whereas, in terms of accountability, both financially and operationally, a police service should be prepared to answer to council and to the community in that there are protections for police service beyond a municipal council, namely to the Province of Ontario Police Services Commission, such that any direct governance by city council or indirect governance by Police Services Board comprised of members of council and/or citizens appointed by council would itself have oversight from the province. And whereas, the amalgamation of municipalities in the former region of Hamilton went worth into one. City of Hamilton was in part recognition of the maturity and commitment to responsibility that an amalgamated city would have through its city council. Whereas, the province should respect maturity and sense of responsibility and allow city council to provide governance to the police services directly through council by way of police services made entirely of a council-appointed citizens or a combination thereof, with such governance to be pursuant to the principles of accountability and independence and pursuant to any provincial regulations regarding the financing and operation of police services. Therefore, be it resolved that the Province of Ontario be requested to amend the Municipal Act and/or the Police Services Act and/or enact special legislation to either enable the Hamilton Police Services Board to be governed directly by Hamilton City Council or enable the Hamilton Police Services to be appointed by council and comprised entirely of city councillors, or a combination of councillors and citizens as council may determine. B, that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Hamilton Police Chief and the Hamilton Police Service, assuring that the city council will continue to respect, strongly support the police service under any form of governance, including unbiding by the key principle of independence and law enforcement. That a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Premier, the Honourable Catherine Wynn, and Minister of Community Safety and Correctional Services, the Honourable Madeleine Mueller, for consideration. And that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Leader of the Opposition, Tim Houdak, and Leader of the NDP, Andrea Horath, all Hamilton area MPPs, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario seeking their endorsement. And if I could just briefly, firstly, thank everyone for their patience on that motion, but I think it was, as a result of its significance, it was incumbent of me to read it in its entirety, for those watching at home. Firstly. Secondly, I think it's important to recognise that this initiative, Mr. Mayor, started months ago. Regardless of what personality issues are going on, or what other peripheral issues are playing themselves publicly presently, there is no direct correlation between that and what this motion is. What this motion is all about, and where this motion was born, just to separate fact from fiction, is that during the budgetary process, and clearly everyone recognises my angst as it pertains to downloading. And we all know, and everyone that's received their bills in the mail surrounding taxation, for the first time, and I'm proud to say, as a result of the support I receive from this council, it clearly highlights that 20% of our budget is a direct result of downloading, that we have no control over. So throughout that particular component, in that discussion, nearly $600 of what people pay in taxes in this city has nothing to do with the city council, and we can't control it. Frankly, we could decrease your taxes, or the people, the hard-working people of the city, by 20% if the province simply paid their bills. Having said that, when this discussion, and in conjunction with Counselor Morelli, and I worked very closely with him on this particular motion, and his two decades of experience in policing, it's important to recognise that we are in a situation where we now, we can add another 20% onto our budget, where that $140 million of policing budget comes to us for approval, but we have no true control over the number because of this arm-length governing body that we only appoint members to, but the majority are appointed by the province, which in essence, in many ways, just becomes another form of downloading. Over and above that insulting component is that they have other means, through arbitration, which we always lose, to simply say to hell with city council, we're going to the province and we get everything we want from the province. And that's been the case for decades. So it's a sham. It's a sham that I knock on doors every four years and say, "I'm going to fight to get you more policing, or I'm going to fight to decrease your taxes," but half of our operating budget has nothing to do with me or anyone else around this table, and everything to do with the province. That, ladies and gentlemen, is a sham. And people are now recognising it as being a sham. I've been singing this song for a lot, a lot of years, but I can assure you, it's rising up in the charts right now, and people are paying attention. And whether it be at the gym, or whether it be in the grocery stores, people are actually asking questions. And now that it's part of the bill, their tax bill, it's written clearly what we are in control of and what we're not in control of, they are now starting to understand. And that was generally the intent from day one. I can recall, it was just a few short years ago where, and I did this by design, and I remember being criticised, I launched an erstwhile motion to sue the province for that amount of money. And I did so to simply shake the issue and push the envelope to have people focused in on the initiative. And on the fact that 50% of our operating budget, what we tax people for, we can't control. That is astounding. There's no other jurisdiction in Canada that can say the same thing. Frankly, there's no other jurisdiction in the entire Western Democratic Hemisphere that can say the same thing. It's wrong. It's broken. We need to fix it. This has nothing to do with Chief de Caire at all. This has everything to do with a governance model that's broken from a downloading perspective, from the Police Act, which is outdated. And we've seen examples that I've highlighted in this motion, and other parts and jurisdictions throughout this country, where it is working and where it's more accountable than when we can go to the public and speak to Mr. Joe Smith on the street and say, "Yes, we are in control of that. We can fix that." What do we tell them now? No, we're simply a rubber stamp to an unelected and unaccountable board, for the most part, the majority, because we do have some members of council on there, but the majority are not elected. They're appointed by the province that has subjected us to 15 or 20 years of that downloading crisis. So we need to fix this, and we need to fix this sooner rather than later. And again, I need to emphasise clearly that this has nothing to do with any peripheral issues, and everything to do with the governance model, and ensuring that this elected body, when we send a message to that Board of Directors, that when we go door-to-door and run campaigns, that we can say that we do represent that amount, the largest amount actually, $140 million. It has doubled since I've been on council in 13 years. Doubled. There's no other department that's doubled to that extent. So I've never not supported the police budget. This was the first year ever, in 14 years, that I've not supported the police budget. And it was unfortunate, because I think we could have found a common ground, but other issues played to the actual conclusion of that, and that, to me, was saddening. Having said all of that, at the end of the day, when you have a thousand-member police association supporting council on an issue, and you have one representative of council, and you have the chief, and the elected, and then the appointed members of the province all on one side, but yet, the vast majority on the other side, there's something broken with that system. It should be the will of this council that directed that budget. And we will be held accountable come election time. If we really drastically make a decision that impairs the process, so be it. I'm willing to be held accountable. But at this point, I don't have that control. Hence, either move forward on ensuring it's all in the City of Hamilton, or simply divest ourselves entirely from it, like the school board. Because frankly, I'm not playing this, it's a charade. It's not real. We have no control over it. So we either bring it in-house, be accountable, be held accountable, have input, or let's just basically call it a day and divest ourselves from it entirely. Set the board up and let them tax the public directly, because we're not doing it. But those who are listening at home, 50%, nearly 50% of our budget, or $1,200 per household on the average of $3,000 per household, we have no control over. That's a system that's broken. That's a system that needs to be fixed, and I stand by that, and this is what this motion's all about, in conjunction with the downloading issues that I continue to fight. And I appreciate your time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I have Counselor Clark to speak.
Thank you.
Pauline, your seconder. Counselor?
I was just called.
Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate Counselor Marula bringing forth his motion, and he actually gave us ample notice of the motion, which enabled us to actually reflect on it. Initially, when I received the motion, and I think it was Tom and I, initially, this is timely, given what we were dealing with on the budget, and I was actually, I actually had told Counselor Marula that I would support it. The extra time gave me time to reflect on the governance model that's in place, the Police Services Act, and a number of other things that are in place within the city. And I began to question, why now? Why is this so significant that we have to jump at it now, given that the last, well, the Police Services Act was created in 1990, the most recent form of it? There were some new regulations that were done in 2010, but the gist of the Police Services Act has not changed. And so we're really talking about governance and having control over the amount of money that's being spent. I started to reflect on other organisations, for example, the Conservation Authority. Conservation Authority even has it better than the Police Department. Conservation Authority, under the Conservation Act, they get to levy the municipality. So they do their operational budget, they do their capital, and they actually have an opportunity to say, "Here's the tax increase for each of the municipalities that are a part of this Conservation Authority, and you have 30 days after the HCA actually passes that budget to decide whether or not you're going to oppose it." Not whether or not you can say, "No, we're not paying," whether or not you're going to oppose it. And if you're going to oppose it, you have to go to a commission and do this, the commission is with the Ministry of Natural Resources, and it's a long-drawn-out, Counselor McCady will know this, as Chair of the HCA, protracted process, with no reasonable expectation that a municipality will actually succeed in opposing the levy that's proposed by the Conservation Authorities. So one could say, "Well, we should be putting all councillors on the HCA." And I couldn't do that. I look back to the Terra landfill, and it was the councillors who were actually supporting the landfill in the community, and it was the citizens who were opposed to it. It was the citizens on the Conservation Authority who actually pushed for the environmental assessment process with the Conservation Authority. So there's this balance that we create on a number of these boards. I thought about public health, and it is mentioned in the actual motion somewhere, I have my glasses off now, so I'm not sure exactly where, but it is mentioned in the motion. I happen to believe public health would be more appropriate if there were all citizens on public health, if it was a separate body from the council. Frequently, we are asked to make decisions that are coming forth with professional recommendations from numerous doctors and health professionals, for example, on pain clinics where methadone is involved, and as opposed to agreeing with the professional health, we say no because it's politically untenable to say yes to a methadone clinic in your community regardless of what the doctors say and how effective it is. It's, you know, we've had other issues. Needle exchanges was another one that our health professionals came forward with. So there's been a number of issues that public health have come forward with, that as councillors, we have to think with two hats. Are we the public health board member now, or are we the city councillor? And if I'm the city councillor, I'm thinking with the elected hat, I'm not thinking with the public health hat, which is what Dr. Richardson is responsible for. So I considered that, then I went back to the Police Services Act, and I started to look at the responsibilities under the Police Services Act. Council, being in a position where we have to establish policing levels across the city, as opposed to what the chief is saying, so you imagine the police chief coming in and making recommendation on policing in his community, which is his responsibility under the Act, his sole responsibility under the Act, and now we're going to have councillors say, "Yes, Mr. Police Chief, but we don't agree. You're going to have less police officers, or you're going to have less cars." There was, if you go to, I was struck by a municipality in Ontario that was taking, challenged by the Police Association, because they had decided that they weren't going to have the big, larger police cruisers, they were going to have the smaller vehicles, like a smart car kind of thing. And they were challenged on it. The council wanted to do it because it made sense, it saved money. But the police chief and the Police Association challenged it, and the council lost. So I don't know what is really broken in this system. This is the first time since I've been on council where council has said no to a direct increase that was requested by the Police Services Board. I looked back over the last 20 years, significant increases, some of them doubled what we dealt with this year, and there was no opposition to those increases. We relied on the professional experience of the police chief to provide advice in terms of what's going on. I understand that there was concern about the number of new police officers that was being proposed, and there's concern over whether or not the action team, or whatever he calls it, is in appropriate use. I don't have the experience to tell the police chief whether or not the action team is working or not. I don't have the experience to tell them whether or not his homicide squad is doing their job. I don't have any of that experience. I look at the financial numbers and I ask questions. That's what I was interested in. I asked for the exact, I mean, I found it fascinating, the Police Services Board actually approved it without the actuals in front of them. Far be it from me to challenge that, but I would have expected that we would have had the actual figures, expenditures. We didn't have that. I understood, you know, what their explanation was, I didn't agree with their explanation. And I voted against the budget based on I didn't have enough information. But I really don't understand what is now broken in this system that was not broken for the last 13 to 20 years. I don't see it. We had an argument over the fee with the chief. I don't see why we're now going to take this argument that we're having with our police chief to the provincial level and ask the Attorney General and the Solicitor General to get involved and consider changing the Police Services Act specifically for Hamilton, given that I don't know of any other municipalities in Ontario that are complaining about it. And do we really want to be the ones that are doing that? I don't want it. I have an excellent relationship with the Premier, excellent relationship with the Cabinet. I don't want to have this debate over whether or not Police Services Act is appropriate or not. That's their decision. We live within that act, and we've been doing a fine job up until now. So I would strongly suggest that it's probably appropriate that bodies that are having personality issues sit down over coffee and, for God's sake, work it out. We're a professional council. It's a professional Police Services Board. Enough is enough. I don't want this played out in the press, and I certainly don't want it brought to Cabinet. So I can't support it the way it is. I'd rather we sit down and have these dialogues and discussions in a professional, respectful way, and fix what's here that's an issue that we have that no one else in Ontario has.
Thanks, Counselor. I have Counselor Jackson, Partridge, Whitehead, and Marula for a second time.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Before I offer some comments, just if I could ask, the mover, under his therefore be a resolved A Roman numeral II, could I just suggest amending the language where it says comprised entirely of city councillors? I think maybe the mover meant members of city council, if I could offer that. And later on, it says a combination of councillors and citizens, again, members of council, Mr. Mayor. So just at the appropriate time, I could amend that language. Thank you, and thanks to the mover. Mr. Mayor, I'm, when Counselor Marula drafted this resolution and sent it out, probably a few weeks ago now, for some initial feedback, I responded in quite an elaborate email in saying that I was of two minds. I cannot deny the fact, Mr. Mayor, that in the past, from about 1997 up to about 2004, and then with a return for one more year due to an extraordinary circumstance, I was a very proud member of Hamilton Police Services Board, appointed by past councils. So I know the privilege it was to serve on that board, and the privilege it must be for the current seven members, that six members that are currently on there, and the new one that is going to begin shortly. So I cannot deny the fact that I enjoyed my time on the Police Services Board. It was an honour to be there. And I've always, Mr. Mayor, as much as I could, I've supported the hybrids of boards and agencies and commissions that have a mix of citizens and politicians on there locally. Look around, we have Library Board, Conservation Authority, Waterfront Trust, City Housing Hamilton, Seniors Advisory, Youth Advisory, Police. Many of us are on a variety of those agencies, boards, and commissions, and we serve with citizens, so they're hybrids. And oftentimes, I like the hybrids, and I think they can work well and effectively, understanding that if the City of Hamilton is the funder and/or the majority funder of the operation and/or capital expenditures, I think there needs to be that respectfulness that at the end of the day, reports are brought back to city council, and council reserves the right to say yea or nay on how it's operating. And that's one of the difficulties at this time that we've had with the Police Services Board, again, that I served on before. So what, I don't know, is if 2013 and this past budget deliberation, Mr. Mayor, was an aberration in terms of the unfortunate conflict that we had with regards to the budget presentation by the board, by the majority of the board and the chief in terms of what was being requested, or not. I'm not sure. And I also find it a bit of a paradox, Mr. Mayor, that our two other departments of emergency services, Fire Department and the paramedics, all come under complete control of the city council and a standing committee. And I've always found it a bit odd and quirky that the Police Department, under the Police Services Act, respectful of that, has not been under, completely under the municipal umbrella, reporting up through a standing committee like Fire and Paramedics are. Actually, I would see greater synergies potentially with police as well hypothetically, possibly reporting up through a standing committee of council. Because let's face it, Mr. Mayor, at the end of the day, regardless of what the boards do that we serve on, at the end of the day, especially if dollars are involved, you know that the emails and phone calls and faxes ultimately land on our laps, and we're the ones every four years accountable with our report cards to the public. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, AMO. I'm glad AMO's brought into this equation, because I don't know what AMO's feeling. I don't know what other municipalities are feeling. Are other municipalities feeling some concerns about runaway policing costs overall? Have they gone through experiences of their budgets that we've been through the last year or two as well? So, Mr. Mayor, in summary, being of two minds, I'm supporting this motion here tonight because I want to begin a discussion. This motion begins a discussion, it asks the Premier for a comment, it asks the Minister of Correctional Services for a comment back, what do you think of our resolution? Area MPPs, AMO? And keeping in mind, again, two of our three emergency departments do report entirely up through standing committees and city council under the current format and structure. So, Mr. Mayor, if for no other reason, this is important to begin this discussion, was 2013 an aberration? I don't know. I'm respectful of our police service. I love our police service, especially the frontline men and women that serve, and serve so capably well. And, but I think the discussion is timely and appropriate, and that's why I'm supporting that here tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I have Counselor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do have a couple of questions. They're more on, I think, directed towards Janice in Legal, if I could, through you, sir. At the top of page two, in the first paragraph there, where it talks about alternatively, city council could support a model where the Police Service Board is comprised exclusively of members of council. The second part is where my question comes in, or alternatively, some combination of councillors and citizens appointed by city council, as is in the case of several cities in Canada. And the ones listed are outside of Ontario. So my question through you, Mr. Mayor, to Janice. Janice, do we have that capability currently?
Through the, Mayor, no. Under the Police Services Act in Ontario, there is not that authority for council to appoint any greater than the one member of the public.
So just clarify, through you, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify then, so we do appoint three members of council, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And we do appoint one member?
One citizen.
From citizens?
One citizen member, yes.
All right. So that's it, under the Ontario, Province of Ontario Police Act, that's all that we're capable of doing. So my next question, that leads to my next question then. In order to change the Police Act, what would the process be through the province? Counselor Clark touched on a couple of the components of it, but I want to make sure I understand that if we did support this and approve it, what would the process be to achieve what it is we want to achieve? Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Janice.
Through the Mayor, the process would be, well, it would require an amendment to legislation, either to the existing Police Services Act, or potentially, you know, a piece of legislation that's freestanding, so special legislation, if you will. It would require legislative change from the province.
But just to make sure I understand then, to clarify, so this special piece of legislation that could happen, would that be similar to the Toronto Act, but it would be specific for Hamilton?
Through the Mayor, the province has, in the past, put, you know, enacted special legislation for municipalities on other matters, not necessarily something of a governance nature, but it may be in the form of special legislation for just Hamilton, or it could potentially be special legislation for all municipalities, although I would think if that were the case, it would then be an amendment to the Police Services Act. The Police The Police Services Act sets out how Police Services Boards are constituted in Ontario based on the population. So that would require either an amendment to that legislation or special legislation to allow Hamilton or other municipalities to do something different than is in that legislation.
Okay, thank you. And through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, then, does it anywhere in this resolution, as it sits right now, where it says "Therefore Be It Resolved," does it include any language around requesting the special legislation specific to Hamilton?
Counselor?
Through the deputy mayor, the, under A, "Therefore Be It Resolved," it is resolved that the Province of Ontario be requested to amend the Municipal Act and/or the Police Services Act and/or enact special legislation. Although it doesn't specifically identify Hamilton, that would be something that presumably the province would turn its mind to, how it wished to pursue this, if it did intend to pursue it.
Would it be your recommendation, through you, Deputy Mayor, that that be an amendment, a friendly amendment, that we put Hamilton in there to be more focused on what it is we're trying to accomplish, if this is supported here today?
Through the deputy mayor, I'm not sure that I would have a recommendation in that regard. I think that this is something that if the province, in my view, if the province were prepared to contemplate moving in this direction, it might well be prepared to contemplate moving in this direction for more than just Hamilton. If it is, you know, I think the question is whether or not the province would be prepared to move in this direction or not. And if so, I would think that it would be prepared to consider this direction for other municipalities as well. It's a bigger question. That would be my view.
Thank you, I understand. So through you, Deputy Mayor, is there anything, does the Toronto Act address those issues? Because Toronto does have specific legislation on a number of fronts.
Through the deputy mayor, I don't believe that there's anything in the City of Toronto Act that specifically references this. I think the City of Toronto is dealt with under the Police Services Act, as are all Ontario municipalities in this regard.
All right, thank you, thank you. And I guess, through you, Deputy Mayor, my question, I'm not sure whether I could direct it to our esteemed colleague, who's with President, as President of AMO, but I'm just wondering if I could, Deputy Mayor, if this is something that AMO is currently looking at on any level? If you could provide some help?
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Powers?
The answer is no. Our discussions with the Minister of Community Safety and Correctional Services is related to the provision of police services through the OPP at the current time. There has been, this would be the first overture made by any municipality in Ontario for consideration of changes to the Municipal Act or the Police Services Act to allow the independence of it. So I checked into that before tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Partridge?
And thank you. And only my last comment, and again, this may be a friendly amendment to this, would be that we circulate it to other municipalities, to the large city mayor's caucus, a similar size to Hamilton. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead is next, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or Deputy Mayor. The government often, and has on occasion, reviewed governance. We wouldn't be amalgamated city if they hadn't reviewed governance. So from that perspective, and I heard comments that, you know, how will we know policing? Well, I think the Act is pretty clear. We're not asking a lot of the elements in the Act to be changed. So as far as day-to-day operations of policing, that's a decision of the chief. What this is about is starting a dialogue. Let's start a dialogue about whether we should be reviewing the current governance model. And what I like about this motion, Mr. Deputy Mayor, is this motion also opens the door in saying, look, if we don't have line-by-line opportunities, and we don't have control or accountability in the context of how dollars are being spent because it's a third party making the decision, then take it. Take it and do the same thing as the school board. So no longer we have to go to the doors and be accountable for the high taxes that people are paying, when a huge, one of the largest contributors to those taxes is police services. Police services went from $80 million pre-2000, pre-amalgamation, to over $140 million today. It's one of the largest and fastest growing tax increases on our budget. And so when we indicate that, well, you know, Conservation Authority, you know, they have this body too, well, two things. Conservation Authority deals with a watershed that is larger than just Hamilton's, so it's pretty difficult to, in that model, to make it work. But two, it's not the largest tax impact in the city of Hamilton. Police Service is one of them. When you look at communities across Ontario, I can tell you that there are communities that 50% of their overall budget currently is going to policing. We've grown since 2008 by 20.3%, while city budget grew by 13%. So it's eroding our ability and our capacity in this community to deliver quality services. So obviously, there needs to be some accountability on the finance side. And no, we're not experts on policing. No one's asking us to. And I'll tell you something, are there any of the board members that's sitting around that table experts on policing? So that's a wash. The issue is, is this governance model working? This particular motion starts a dialogue, an important dialogue. I want to be clear that I'm getting phone calls from police services around Ontario, from elected officials, that say it's time, because the uncontrolled financial impacts those communities are seeing year in and year out. It's a national discussion, FCM, and I know Counsel Debel can attest to that, and certainly, and I know AMO can attest to the fact that it is a very significant issue in the Province of Ontario. So back to my quote, thank you, Maria Pearson, insanity, doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. But guess what? Maybe it's time, Albert Einstein, thank you, maybe it's time that we review the governance, start the dialogue, because that's all this motion's doing, start the dialogue, let's get into what might be a better governing model, and ensure that there's accountability in this process, whether it's out of the city completely, or whether it's more in control of the city in regards to the financial implications. So I think it's timely, and it's not timely because of anything else other than this is a rising pressure on taxpayers across the Province of Ontario, and Hamilton's no exception. And we can't afford to continue going down this road, doing the same thing. Thank you.
Counselor McCady?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I guess, like Counselor Jackson, I'm of two minds on this subject. I only have three terms of council to draw from in terms of my own personal experience looking at police budgets, 10 years of that period of time. And I, you know, I guess the major concern I have is this issue of independence. And I reflect on Counselor Clark's comments in that respect, and I think of the Board of Health. Several years ago, public health in Ontario was, went through a bit of a crisis period where the several health units voted in favor of cutting budgets and taking drastic action as compared to following the recommendations of the Medical Officer of Health, which was obviously in favor of public health directions. And they, in fact, put the citizens of those areas at risk as a result of their decision. And the Province of Ontario had to step in to govern those particular health units. That led to a province-wide review of how public health is administered across the province. And we, in fact, changed our model to the current one we have. And we had a recent discussion here at the Board of Health, Mr. Mayor, led by Dr. Richardson, where we looked at the model and just to make sure it's still functioning, because it's important in issues like health, like public, that the Medical Officer of Health is able to operate to the best interest of the citizens of Hamilton, in our case, citizens of Ontario and other jurisdictions across the province, and needs to operate with some level of independence when it comes to a very important issue like public health. I think what concerns me is the timing of this motion. Again, I only have the three terms, Mr. Mayor, in terms of the experience, but Counselor Clark indicated that, in fact, we had higher tax increases under other police chiefs other years, and we didn't take this step, asking for a governance review or asking for an amendment to the Municipal Act, to look at the language here, which I'd like to touch on in a moment. So that makes me a little bit nervous about the approach we're taking here and the timing of this. I too, like Counselor Clark, would like to have, focus in on the relationship between the current Chief of Police and this city council, following the budget discussion we had, and to deal with that directly, rather than take an approach here. And I mentioned the language, it really doesn't start a dialogue. It's very definitive that it requests that the Province of Ontario amend the Municipal Act and/or the Police Services Act or enact special legislation to enable changes here in Hamilton. So if it was, if the motion talked about requesting that the Province of Ontario review the governance, issues that currently exist across the province, or currently exist in Hamilton, I suppose, specifically, as it applies to police service boards and the dynamics with city councils, including the cost issues that we're, that we've been concerned up with this particular budget we've just gone through. You know, I'd be more comfortable with that, and I could support that kind of a motion that talks about a review of the governance method across Ontario with, you know, specific items noted that we'd ask the province to review and to engage with the city of Hamilton and other large cities that have independent police services, perhaps relating to the OPP, if that makes sense, in terms of the AMO direction that Counsel Powers has talked about. So I'm just nervous about the independence issue, and Counselor Clark raised the issue of Conservation Authorities. And, you know, I'm probably going out on a bit of a limb here, but I've only been Chair of the Hamilton Conservation Authority for close to two years. And I think it's probably fair to say that we need a more substantive increase in our Hamilton Conservation Authority budget than 0%. We need a higher increase based on the number of issues we're dealing with. Mr. Mayor, we're dealing with climate change, we're dealing with additional flooding issues that we're all aware of right across the city, particularly in the east end of the city, and we're doing some work with the city on that right now as a Conservation Authority. We feel it's important to acquire, continue to acquire natural areas and wetlands and manage those wetlands to improve things here in Hamilton, to increase conservation areas and the trail options here in the city. And of course, we deal with a lot of development issues of the Conservation Authority as well, that we have to spend staff time on. So I think if we really sat down and looked at the increase we needed, it's probably 2%, 3%, 4%, 5%, particularly given the 0% we've come in at the last, in the last three or four years. So the Conservation Authority is not that independent. It's, the majority of board members are city councillors, and I think reflect the view of city council and the budget interests of city council. So I think that's a bit of a tricky example if we were to look to that. And this independence question is one that comes up, you know, a number of ways, whether it's the Board of Health, the Conservation Authority, or the Police Services Board, the subject of the discussion tonight. So just a bit nervous about the approach here, and I'd much prefer the mover to consider language around asking the province to review the governance model that we have in the Province of Ontario, or specifically, as it's affecting Hamilton right now, we could certainly reference our own municipality that we have concerns about. But I'd rather take that approach and also encourage, I don't know how to do it, Mr. Mayor, we'll need to work with you to really start engaging directly with the Police Services Board and the Police Chief to reopen our, talk about our relationship and talk about what happened during the budget process and how we can repair that relationship. So I'm having a hard time supporting this motion tonight unless we, the language is more about entering into a discussion, as has been talked about before, you know, asking for a review of governance, rather than a direct request to amend the Municipal Act to change how the Hamilton Police Services Board is governed. Thanks.
Do I have Counselor Pearson? No, on that point, Counsel Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate allowing the conversation to go on. I too have to concur with a couple of my previous speakers that I'm really split on this, and I'm going to just take it down to the nuts and bolts of it, is that we all recall that the Chief at budget deliberations brought in the budget and his concerns addressing the needs going forward as far as growth and development. We sat here tonight and dealt with Scooby, 15,000 people potentially. There's going to be need for officers, officers, equipment, vehicles, stations, the whole works. And I'm really concerned, I'm not qualified, I'm not experienced, and I really wonder if this became a council committee, like Board of Health, that we would even chant saying, no, it can't happen. We all know as far as Stony Creek, I'm lucky if we have one officer, if not two, at the off times from Strathern East, and we know that very well, and the officers know we know that, and they do their darndest to serve our community. But believe me, if I had to sit there as a representative on the Police Services Board as a council rep, you're wearing two hats, but you have to remember the huge requirement of safety in this community at all times. And I would never take that power and determination that the Chief has to have in his pocket to address these issues. And I don't know that changing the government's model is going to do that. There's three provincial reps, that's all there is, that are appointed by the province. We have council representation, we have citizen representation. So I'm concerned saying, and hopefully, in all honesty, all of the representatives have received some training to assist them in the decisions that are made around that table, especially, obviously, the provincial representatives were appointed because they must have some experience. And I'm not going to name names, but they must have some experience and some understanding of the ways and the way to deal with these issues and address these concerns. They're not doing them haphazardly. And I don't believe that they're saying, well, the Chief's just going to make all the decisions. You sit on the board, along with other council colleagues. So I really, I'm sitting here, I'm sitting here torn also, because I know that if it became all of us as councils Board of Health, and I don't think we've ever said to Dr. Richardson, no, sorry, you're going to close this area of service, and we've tried to address that. And you've got to remember, funding is also different on the Board of Health level than it is on the policing level. So we have to factor all of that in. And right now, with this motion, I feel very uncomfortable even saying to the province, we're questioning this. And this is the first year the Chief really rocked the boat, but he's done a commendable job. I have not received complaints. If I said to you, I had, I'm going to guesstimate off the top of my head, a half a dozen calls from residents saying, no, tell him no, tell him not to, that he doesn't get the increase, he doesn't get the officers. That's it. I represent close to 30,000 residents in Ward 10 alone. So I'm really questioning, do we need to go down this road right now, and is it just a matter of sitting around the table and saying, where are we going to be? And that's what the Chief has to determine, interpreting the growth and official plans that we're putting in place, that he has to meet. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, or Mr. Mayor, sorry.
And now for a second time, I have Counselor Marula, and then Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to clarify, this is all about a review. We don't have the legislative authority to impose anything. Frankly, this is all about requesting a review. We don't- We don't have the legislative authority to impose anything, as you know, because we are a creature of the province, and that is basically the fundamental problem that we're experiencing because of that. So just to rehash what the problem is, this is not about taking control or a power grab. The option here, too, is to divest ourselves from the act of operation as school board. So, and I understand that 50% of our budget, we have no control over, and there are those of us who are apologizing for that. I'm not going to apologize for that. The system is broken. When you can't control a line-by-line scenario, and it's not about taking control of the operation, it's about taking control of the budget. So, and Counselor Clark, God bless him, he was part of the Mike Harris government that imposed the downloading, and I understand that he apologizes for that, and now he's apologizing for the Police Board as well and the legislation associated with that. And that's your prerogative. But we're suffering, as a city, because of those pieces of legislation. So I implore you, to you, Mr. Mayor, to be part of a solution. Don't make apologies for legislation that you supported previously and now apologizing for it, because your residents deserve more. 50% of the operating, 50% of their taxes, Mr. Mayor, is related to legislation he supported when he was at Greens Park, and now he's apologizing for when he's at City Hall. So I really, I implore everyone to look at this. We're not asking to take total control. What we're asking for is a review. So along what Counselor McCabney suggested, that is the intent of this motion. It is to really put up the red flags and say, "We have a problem." It's been acknowledged by AMO. Counselor Powers, as the President, has concurred with my concerns and that, whose support was before us today. Counselor DeValle and his FCM counterparts concur with the problem and what's being presented here today. Counselor Powers has stated that to me personally, and he concurred publicly, out loud, when Counselor Partridge referenced it. So it is an issue. To deny it is putting your head in the sand and avoiding it. And again, it's nothing to do with the Chief, it has everything to do with the governance. This started before any of those other issues occurred, and it was all about the downloading and being held accountable and telling, and being honest to our residents to say, "Yes, we are sending this tax bill to you, but just so you know, half of it has nothing to do with us. All of you just want to continue, if you're not going to support us, continue to..." I think we need to change that. And you know what? If that means divesting ourselves, so be it. That's an option. But I'm no longer going to play the charade to suggest that we're taxing people for a service we have control over, because we don't. So, at the end of the day, if you want unelected and basically unaccountable people controlling the services, the police services, and it's the largest budgetary alignment of the city, so be it, then that's part of the whole Senate scenario in Ottawa, unaccountable, unelected...
Counselor, you're covering all ground.
So, in essence, the bottom, I'm sorry, what did you want to drop?
Just in the interest of time, we...
In the interest of time, I'm making, now you've just taken 10 seconds away from me, but I'll add that to the final. So, at the bottom line of this, we could either ask for total control or we can divest ourselves. But primarily, what's before us, because we don't have the authority to change it. We're asking for a review that should be conducted province-wide and nationwide, which has been at the support of AMO and at the support of the FCM. So, at the end of the day, put aside the personalities, put aside any peripheral issues, and stand up for your residents and be part of a solution rather than making apologies for the problem. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Basuda, for a first time.
Thank you, Mayor Bettina. We pulled up today Part III of the Municipal Police Services Boards here, and I'm listening to discussions here. And with, and I don't want to belabor this, we're going on here, but seven-member boards in circumstances, excuse me, under this act, exceeding, population exceeding 300,000, we usually have seven people on the board. We do have seven people on our board. We talked about an imbalance. We have the head of municipal council, which could be the mayor, or the mayor, if he chooses not to be a member of the board, may, the council may appoint by resolution of council another member of council, plus two members of council, so that's three from Hamilton City Council, the mayor and two councillors. One person appointed by resolution of council who is neither a member of council nor a city employee, that is the public person that would be appointed. That person applies for the position and goes through the selection committee, who, selection committee are members of council, correct? So, now we have three members of council and one privately independent person appointed. That's four by council. And then we have three others who are appointed through the province by Lieutenant Governor and Council. It's a 1997 act. Okay, so, I don't totally see an imbalance here. We have the mayor and we have two councillors who are responsible to the people, have been elected by the people of Hamilton, the taxpayers. Okay? I'm good with that. The question here is, when we get down farther down, and we get to 30.1, and it talks about responsibilities of boards, and in A is appointment of members of municipal police force, establish policies for effective management of police force, generally determine after consultation with the Chief of Police, object to his priorities with respect to police services municipality, direct the Chief of Police and monitor his or her performance. That's the responsibility of the board. And it goes on, there's from A to J. And what we're looking for here through this motion and moving forward, with the potential, should this ever come back, the council has control over the police services, are we looking at following through on all these responsibilities, excuse me, including to direct the Chief of Police and monitor his or her performance? That's a question I'm throwing out there. I don't know who, that's just a question in general, but it's my comments from some of the stuff I've picked up here. And I'm torn between what I'm going to do with this one, too, when we come to vote, but it's just some stuff I researched, and I did a whole lot more research, but I'm not going to belabor this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have Counselor Clark for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In my time on this council, I've noticed a pattern with certain member from Ward 4, that every time certain members oppose what he's putting forth, there's this outrage of infantile partisan prattle that has absolutely nothing to do with the debate. So, we won't bother going through that, and its facts are usually misrepresented to the nth degree. For example, the member did say, Mr. Mayor, that Counselor Powers supported what he was saying, that AMO was in favor of this. What Counselor Powers indicated is they're reviewing governance of the OPP, and that we would be the first municipality in Ontario that has brought forth any request for this type of review. That's not what we heard from the member for Ward 4 just a few minutes ago. So it's important that you really listen to what is being said. I congratulate Counselor Basuda for having the initiative to pick up the Police Services Act and read it, because the Police Services Act has been around a long time, and it was developed to give municipalities control. You have three councillors and an appointed member that you appoint, 4-3. Council always has control over the Police Services Board. That's why there's no other people around the province who are crying about the Police Services Board, or the Police Services Act, or about any change.
Call order, please.
And with respect to the member for Ward 8, it would be wonderful if, when time to time he says again, all the emails and letters and phone calls, start presenting names, because we're a little bit tired of listening to, "Oh, I'm getting all these calls." Give us names so we can talk to these people, because I'm not getting the calls. I got people telling me to say, "What are you doing contemplating having the council take over the Police Services Board?" What is wrong with the act the way it's written currently? Someone tell me where one clause in the act is not working, because it is working, it has been working for 20 years. If it isn't working, then the members on this council who sat on the Police Services Board for all those years would have brought up concerns about it. You had control, 4-3. Every vote, 4-3. Every vote, 4-3. You had control. Still have control, 4-3. So, it's about relationships, it's about personalities, it's not about the act, and I really, I am so concerned that we're going to throw this up to the province to premier win and say that we want her to amend the municipal act and/or the Police Services Act to enact special regulation and legislation, because we can't get along in Hamilton with the Police Chief. Because that's what it's coming down to. So, get over ourselves, start working together to resolve the issues, and start going to the province for every problem that we can't fix on our own. The act is fine, there's no problem with the act. And I really, I'm tired of debating partisan issues at a council level. We're supposed to be here for the city of Hamilton. This has worked here for decades, for decades. Worked with Chief Mullin, worked with Chief Robertson. Go back. Where was the issues? Where was the proposals for amendment? Some of you have been on the council 15, 20 years. Now, all of a sudden, we're not comfortable that we have 4-3 on the board, and so we have to throw in the towel and say the act needs to be changed, we want all the members to be members of the council. I can't go down that road. And I just cannot listen to the nonsense that continues to perpetrate out of certain people.
First, actually, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. It directs the issue of the Police Board, and the Police Board mandated to provide adequate and effective police service. The cost which AMO and FCM are working on is the compensation, and that's another piece of the job. But the Police Service Board, I feel, in all honesty, has to accept that their decision on policing is directed to adequate and effective policing. And if there were some frivolous issues that were, I mean, I think a few years ago, we had this thing with orthotics, where the orthotics bill for the shoes was in the millions. And so, we would rightly, I think, on the Police Services Board, try to detect things that really don't play towards adequate and effective policing. So that's the one issue that the board is for. The other one, 85% of the budget is compensation, and that's the stumbling block that even the chiefs of police across Ontario are confronted with. I'm afraid that's all I will say or should say at this time, but I'll take the chair back, and I have no further speakers. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you do. I had Counselor Marula and then Counselor Whitehead.
Just clearly, just on a point of partisanship, I'm not sure why I, Counselor Clark's being offended by the fact that I highlighted the fact that he was part of Mike Harris' government that introduced the downloading issue, which 20% of the people are paying residential taxes right now are directly related. So how that's considered partisan and not factual is really concerning, not to mention that he ran for Stephen Harper, the federal government, he's the one that's being partisan. He stood for nomination and ran for Harper, he was lapdog for Mike Harris, and I'm calling him for it. So there's a difference between being partisan and exposing someone for who they are, and he's part of the problem, and I'm asking him...
Be part of the solution.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Point privilege, okay. Counselor Whitehead.
It's a point of privilege, and for the record, and Counselor Marula knows this, Mr. Mayor, I was elected in 1999, I did not participate in any of the votes of downloading, there was no downloading from the province of Ontario from 1999 on. As a matter of fact, I was responsible personally for changing the ambulance agreement that uploaded the ambulance from the 100% balance.
Bring the hand shirt, and I'll see if you're a part of the...
Okay. As a chair, I have the floor.
You're a part of the problem. Be part of the solution.
The facts are that we uploaded the ambulance 50/50 as a result of my negotiations when I was there. And as a result, maybe in the Ministry of Transportation, we uploaded GoTrans. So you remember for Ward 4, ladies and gentlemen, does not want to hear the facts and does not want to share the facts. He still continues to be upset that he lost the nomination, this nominee, Paul Mullin. So, as a result of that, this part of the discussion is over.
Do you have anything to contribute to this, Mr. Counselor Whitehead?
People ask why now. And the issue why now, discussion, I mean, you talk about naming names, I've heard a bunch of friends, the cabinet mentioned so, but I didn't hear any names. So, I mean, I don't want to play that game. What I wanted to do was the issue. The issue is the taxes in this community need to be under control. The issue is that the police budget has almost doubled in the last 12, 13 years, and the issue is it's going faster than all other budgets, and it's not just in Hamilton, but it's happening across the province of Ontario. That's a fact, that's a fact. Now, we talked about reviewing governance, Mr. Chair, the province did that with municipalities. We could argue that it was the model that we had, the existing, the mountaintop nation was working, but obviously, the province of Ontario decided that it was a better governance model in context of the challenges of Hamilton and AMO. So when I look at, and when we talk about the board makeup, and God bless the council for doing the research, let's be clear, the four of the members are having automatically under legislation appointed to the board. They're not selected by council.
Three.
No?
Three.
Four?
Three.
The mayor is there, a matter of legislation in the Police Services Act, automatically, he's not a selection of council. The three, what, is that a fact? He's a member of council. But he's not selected by council, let's be clear. Counselor, secondly, the three members appointed by the province...
I have a motion to call a question. I have a second there.
I have the floor.
I have the floor and the chair. I have a second, or to call a question. All in favor of calling a question? All in favor of calling a question? Chair, thank you. Standing record is over. On Counselor Whitehead's motion...
Just by the amendment, just to the language, it's members of council, please, that's the...
That's right, so it's all council, and it also is asking if you're before, if you're even... Sorry, Counselor Jackson.
Mr. Mayor, remember at the beginning, about an hour ago, I just said, just building the bridge, putting up, instead of city councillors, I just said it'd be members of council if it's appropriate.
Okay, so on the amendment, all in favor of the amendment, Chair. All right, on the main motion, all in favor, standing record is over.
Counselors Whitehead, DeValle, Jackson, Collins, Marula, Farr, Ferguson, and Shaw.
And those opposed, I understand.
Mayor Bettina, Counselor McCabney, Pearson, Johnson, Basuda, and Clark.
And so the motion passes. Thank you very much. Now, we would have noticed that Counselor Whitehead, you were to introduce your motion respecting full bill of the province of home care.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I believe I wish to waive the rules, because it is timely. So, move by myself, six of the council developers, rules are being waived, or to allow the introduction of most respective full of the province of home care. Questionable to tie in, so my understanding, Mr. Chair, that they want to follow the material, meaning with the counties across Ontario, in this timeline, to accomplish that, I think, within the next month or two, if they want to be in ministry.
So they want to have the resolution passed, so a waive of the rule, all in favor. You have a comment, Counselor Whitehead?
Just for safety reasons, I don't know when I said this, but my in-laws are doing home care, and I may be in contact with the result, I know this affects the general population, but I want to put another, I think I'm just going to carry on the discussion of voting that, just to be safe.
All in favor, Chair, and on the motion.
Mr. Mayor, move by myself, six of the council developers, and I'm a lot aware of that is, basically, it's just a commitment to home care, ensuring the province of Ontario provides the appropriate resources, but I want to note that Counselor, I met him at West End Mall originally, and we had subsequent meetings with Counselor Jackson, who stood up to come, Counselor DeValle, and it is clear that there's a campaign to make sure that home care is lost on the provincial agenda, and clearly, the concern that Counselor Jackson, myself, and DeValle, that is any motion that we would consider, we want to make it clear that it can't come with expenses, the municipalities, the province has to step up, play financially, that is contained in the motion. So, the motion is pretty clear, it's a motion to stay back, and I was hoping you could support that.
Before we carry on, could I introduce our Minister Ted McMeagan, who has joined us? Captain Ted, your cable getting pulled, I think it's, great to have you here tonight. Thank you so much. Thanks so much. All right, now, demolition of City Motor Hotel, Counselor Marula, your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it's move by myself, actually, the notice motion before us, but I believe I need to waive the rules, so I introduce the notice motion, and I waive waive the rules, so I'll introduce the notice motion, and I waive the rules, seconded by Counselor Collins.
All favor of waiving the rule.
Very.
Go ahead.
And it's move by myself, seconded by Counselor Collins, and it's before you with respect to the demolition of City Motor Hotel with the Ward 4 reserve account being identified.
All in favor.
Chair, you have a question?
Yeah, just question, I was curious to know through you to Counselor Marula, why, I know there's a timed thing about three weeks to put it up for public tender. Demolition contracts are all over the map, depending on who's looking for what salvageable materials. I mean, in the case of the ream plant, we were all pleasantly surprised when the little bidder actually gave us a $250,000 credit and took the building away. And if you go sole source something, they're not likely to build those type of credits. So, it'd be nice if we still put it through a public procurement process, and, and, and rather than sole source it, just to make sure we're getting...
In an ideal world, I agree with you, but the problem is with the liability issues surrounding the site and the process, staff has advised me according to the motions before us, and if it's not, and I believe, through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe the ream property was sole sourced, it was not RFP. So if I can get clarification on that through you?
Well, I think you may have support on your motion anyway, Counselor, so all in favor.
Very.
I'm sorry, you're not in favor?
Oh, sorry. There wasn't, there was an example that they gave me. Chris? Chris Murray.
You want to address that?
Yeah, we don't want to shut it down.
Okay, Counselor, you have your motion before us. The Counselor has brought up the issue of maybe getting a better deal on demolition.
Okay, so through you, Mr. Mayor, to Chris. Chris, can you elaborate on that, please?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Rome is here because similar to what happened in the West End property, the demolition associated there, Rome was involved. So Rome can, can answer, I think, the questions.
Please go ahead. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The ream property, we did go through a formal tender process. The amounts of metal and steel in that property were quite extensive, and hence the reasoning of the salvage cost and the benefit to the city of 125,000, if I recall. With regards to the motor motel, based on my experience and based on the experience and number of demolitions we've done in the city, I don't anticipate the salvage cost there. It's straight material, concrete, and so forth. So I don't, I wouldn't anticipate salvage cost at that property.
Yeah, there'd be a few girders, but no rebar.
Okay, yeah, so I, my apologies, I misunderstood what they told me. The reason why they wanted to sole source it was to prevent the problems that occurred at the ream property. So as a direct result, that's what was communicated to me last night about squatters and stealing and so on. There was a lot of, so through you, Mr. Mayor, could someone elaborate on that component versus the ream property? Well, actually, we don't need to.
Well, let's, let's go to, I think you're going to get your...
Okay, I just wanted to be open and transparent. While we're doing this.
Second.
Okay. All right.
So all in favor of the demolition motion?
Very.
Any opposed? Thank you. Profluoro octane sulfonate, I practiced that all day. Counselor Johnson, do you wish to introduce your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to waive the, the rules. I have moved by myself and seconded by Counselor McCady that the rules of order be waived to allow the introduction of this motion respecting the Ministry of the Environment comments on the risk assessment pertaining to PFOS contamination.
On the waiving of the motion, all in favor?
Thank you. I don't know if everyone is aware of this, but on May the 27th, we had an airport implementation meeting. We were having a struggle keeping quorum. The staff at that time asked us to put this into a motion form for them, so it'll be easier for them to obtain the instructions. So the first point is that the Ministry of the Environment Standards Branch be requested to respond to the city of Hamilton with their comments on the risk assessment pertaining to PFOS contamination by June 30th, 2013. If we let the process work right now, then those minutes from the airport implementation meeting now goes to GIC on June the 19th. By the time it's ratified by council, it gives MOE four days. Now we're giving them a little bit more time. That the, the second point is the Ministry of the Environment be requested to test and determine the source of mercury pollution in Lake Nyipinko. And this is another issue that we have right now, that we're finding mercury in there. When I asked the staff, "Is it possible that we got the PFOS from the airport, could we in fact got the airport or the mercury?" And the response back was, "It could be from agricultural." So this was the same sort of response I got back when I was asking about the PFOS. So we really want to nail those two down. The community's been waiting for over a year now for the results of the risk assessment to find out how we're mediating, what we're going to do, and we just keep getting told that it's, it's going to come back, it's going to come back. So we're basically asking the branch officers to come forward and give us their comments to council by June the 30th. Thank you.
And the seconders?
And our second is, is Counselor McCady.
Right, and all in favor? Thank you. Temporary appointment of the Police Services Board, Counselor Marula.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion's before us, and as a result of the vacancy that we're all aware of, this motion is move by myself and seconded by Counselor Collins.
To waive the rules?
Oh, sorry, motion to waive the rules, yeah.
All in favor of waiving? Go ahead.
So move by myself, seconded by Counselor Collins, that we have a temporary appointment to the Police Services Board, and it's before you.
All in favor? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I definitely... It was, okay, sorry, Counselor, it's been a long night. Sorry, it's been a long evening. And we appoint Counselor Lloyd Ferguson as the appointee.
Okay.
So I'm looking for some comment from our legal staff, because the way the Police Services Act is written, we don't have the authority to appoint temporarily. We have to wait until the outcome of OCAP before there's any decision, and it's in the hands of the Police Services Board.
Do you have a response for that?
So through the mayor, the, the Legislation Act makes provision for council or governing body that has the ability to appoint to also appoint temporarily to fill vacancies for absences or inability to act. Under the Police Services Board regulation, Counselor Whitehead is required not to participate or he's unable to act, and therefore, our reading of the Legislation Act, Section 77, makes clear provision for council to appoint. The, there is no requirement under the Police Services Act or regulation that council must appoint for a, a particular period of time. There's a maximum period of time for appointments, but no minimum period of time. And there is a past practice in Hamilton of making temporary appointments, I believe